We need the legal description for the lease.
We need the legal description for the lease. Yeah, we're trying to log in.
Ready to go?
Ready to go.
Okay, well, of course I have a PowerPoint. Prepared for you. Let me share that right now. We'll get going. Um, everyone can hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor, for having me again tonight. Um, and let's kick off talking about a little bit about what's been going on. Footfall is always an indicator of the health of what's going on. Um, and you can see that in the February and March, we had some of our worst February and Marches um, on dates as we've been counting footfalls. You see, um, March was especially bad. Um, but then we picked back up in April. Um, and picked up a little bit, uh, some stuff in the very early of the month. Uh, helped us kind of make a a decent April out of it. Um, and then May so far, this is May month to date football downtown. We started off strong and then we had a good May Fest. Um, this past weekend, you can see this spike there, just a little bit better than last year, but not, not by much. So hopefully, um, things are turning around a little bit, uh, because those were some pretty abysmal, um, first two, uh, those two months, um, February and March. Um, and then that leads me to May Fest that we just had. Um, this is looking at the, the counts, uh, just of overall attendance. Again, these are footfalls, not people. Um, and on Saturday, we had seventy-five thousand, almost seventy-six thousand footfalls. Previous year, you can see just a little bit less than that. Um, and the, um, oop, I wanted to go back up to that. Um, you can also see the busiest time of the day was actually during our fest suit on Saturday. Um, right here at noon. On Saturday was the busiest time of the week, uh, for that. And then, uh, we did have the weather working a little bit against us. You can see that this week, uh, this past week on Saturday, it was partly, it's mostly overcast and seventy-six, where we had sunshine and eighty-six degree, eighty-six degrees last year on both Saturday and Sunday. Um, so thanks for those who joined in the fest suit that were there. Hopefully you had a good time. I always find just walking down the street waving and having people videotape you and wave back is is kind of a unique experience. Um, and we had a really good turnout. It seemed like there was more people lying in the streets for the parade, um, than we've had in years past. I don't know, maybe that's just my faulty memory. Um, and then I'm gonna also share with you a little bit about our Bavaria trip. So, um, all those that were on the trip are collectively gasping right now, hoping I'm probably not gonna post any embarrassing photos. I am not, um, but here's some things that we learned on the Bavaria trip. We need a castle. Someplace, anywhere, a castle, that'd be great. They're great, uh, great attractions. There's not enough lodging tax for a castle, so we gotta figure something else out. Um, we got to see a maple raising or partially, um, and then, uh, throughout the day, got to see additional, um, communities that were raising their maple, uh, during the first, May first. Um, we also, another thing we don't have enough lodging tax for is, uh, this was Gouda Fest. This is their temporary, uh, uh, tent for the event. Um, and they go crazy with the, uh, the fabric on the ceiling. Um, Gouda Fest did give me a really good idea. Uh, there's this guy, um, that's led through the parade on this big keg. And I think it could happen, if you see. It's not, it's pretty easy. I just need to source the keg. And there we go, right? And here's me taking a picture of Selby, taking a picture of Maggie, taking a picture of Amanda and Rusty Gibbs. As a favorite. And then, oh, look at that, all the group photo there. So, um, thank you for the city for attending. I hope you guys got a lot out of it. We crammed a lot in, but you got to see all the major cities that represent, um, the code. Um, and hopefully got a lot of inspiration and ideas from this trip. Um, and then, uh, those photos and more, I shared with the city staff, um, with you guys. Uh, maybe Andy didn't get it. I'm not sure I had her email, so please share it with her, um, if, if she didn't. Uh, but this is, uh, uh, Dropbox folders that I set up. And anybody on that list that you got this can download. And what we try to do is make a really good new list, uh, digital list of all of the things that we draw from for inspiration. As you can see there, from bollards to relief maps of towns. Uh, we had, every little town has a relief map, a bronze map. That was really cool. Anyway, some of those ideas and inspirations, you can upload to those either by day or by category. Um, and then I'll finish with the eleven, uh, the ambassador program. I have that about seventy percent full. We have about eight slots we still need to fill out of, fill out of the thirty-two we had open. Um, but luckily we have the additional funding this year to pay, uh, our staff, uh, for recreation ambassadors. So they will be able to fill in where my volunteers are sparse or non-existent. So that is my update. Happy to take any questions.
Questions?
Troy, we did not receive that Dropbox link, so if you want to forward it to us.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I didn't see a parking folder in there. Do you observe any parking?
Yes.
Wait signage and is there?
We got a couple. Jess, Jesse got a picture from the bus of a garage in Bob Tools that I could not then find. The mayor and I found a parking garage in Garvish. And, uh, it was a subterranean one, but there was a nice barn structure for the entrance and then another pedestrian, um, pop-out. So I've got photos of that.
Kind of a cool way of disguising of, you know, the park and different look. That's cool. Okay.
It was also though amazing to see how, how many of their streets weren't blocked off. That's what amazed me is you found pedestrians and autos living, but they're, they don't have as many autos. So they don't get, it's not as big of a problem in a lot of those small communities. But you'd see the cars coming down and people walking through and around and that drives more too.
The delivery trucks were smaller.
All delivery trucks are smaller, the roads are smaller. I mean, everything was, was, but, but they didn't have to say no cars. I think, you know, the fact is they respected the, the thing and you mostly saw the bikes and people, but it was occasionally those cartons that would come down.
I think, yeah, the reality is right that we're modeling Bavaria, we're not Bavaria. We talk about Alpine Crosses, they're all over Europe. Well, we're not in Europe, right? We, it's taking a step back and, yeah, realizing that.
That's cool. Cool. All right, thank you Troy.
Um, I'll leave this. Here's just, uh, you can probably see this little preview, but here's some, uh, ideas of parklets, uh, because we saw quite a few really cool parklets in, um, uh, Salzburg, uh, so if that's a good segue to the next topic, I will uh, leave it at that and ask for more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you Troy. Sure, Kim. As a council, um, next on your agenda is a presentation from, uh, Peter James. Troy kind of introduced the topic. Uh, this is about, uh, a parklet that he has proposed for, um, between the Londonworth Hotel Park Lot and Front Street. And, uh, he's already presented this to the Downtown Steering Committee. Um, has he been to design review? No, okay. Um, he's been to the chamber and now he's here to present the video.
How you guys doing today?
All right.
Okay, so you here has not heard about the parklet project yet. I think I've talked to just about everyone in town, but so, uh, that's what you were saying, we met with the steering committee, the chamber, uh, board. We met with, um, yeah, for the local society, we met with, uh, of the festival association, that was city administrators including Selby. And, um, and kind of most critically, we've met with Somos a couple times. So understanding that they are a big part of shaping future visitor experience here. Um, uh, they actually incorporated their feedback, because they had more like tangible feedback on the project than anyone else. So you'll actually see their feedback directly in your packet. I'll go through this. So if anyone's not clear about what it is, I'll go ahead and go through this. So, um, project summary would be to, uh, create a high visual impact by simply replacing the cement people blocks that are adjacent to the parking lot with trees, flowers, planters, benches, trash can, and visitor-oriented, uh, functional display. So essentially making part of the street that used to be parking spaces that's now, um, unused and Bavarian and making it a lovely place to spend time. So the parklet will remain within the nine-foot width of the entire parking spaces, which leaves twenty-two feet of street with vehicles and pedestrians in addition to sixteen-foot of actual sidewalk space. So there's just a ton of ruins down there for them. So on the next page, question, what is the parklet? Well, this is, uh, it's becoming more and more common across the country and across the world. Um, state existing parking spots convert them into a place for pedestrians to rest, to enjoy, um, the activities of the street, to sit, socialize. And, uh, they also often provide literary art and other visual elements to beautify the space. So we have an example here, um, Valonia, Washington, example in Alexandria, Virginia. Then Troy has so I made provided some very example parklets in Bavaria. I think those will be really fun to study when you're designing for the benches.
Peter, just, I think it's worth clarifying, even though it should be obvious, but your example says they're converters parking spaces. The space that you're proposing is not currently or is any class that uses parking spaces, right? So that's just, that could be a hot stuff.
Prior parking space. Maybe it's parking space, yeah.
Just wanna make sure nobody thinks that we're actually taking away parking because it's a hot button issue in our town.
True, true. And, uh, no, there's few communities that have had foresight that the state has to actually convert the entire main road into a pedestrian area. So if you hear, though, it's giving people a place to sit down. Um, my, uh, parket gallery across the street on Mini Hotel Level. Where we watch people all day long, walking from as far as, you know, Icicle Mountain Resort, where they walk a mile and they still have to go all the way to Front Street Park to sit down. So at that point, you know, they are tired and they are just, they're not stopping any shops. They're not doing anything else. They're getting to a spot where they can relax. Um, alternatively, if people are coming up from, uh, Asgard, uh, Park Lot, but then they get feared, they're just turning back around to go back home. So it gives them a dwelling place. Um, one fun, uh, example is during Christmas lighting last year, we actually had a family because, so we have sofas in our gallery and people often come down, walk down there. We are very grateful they have a place to sit. We had one family that left their mother on one of our sofas for five hours while they went and did their shopping. Touristing. And that was a good, interesting experience. We had to order their soup from Yodlin. But, uh, yeah, so it just shows that they're really for people to have space, um, to enjoy. And then also, you know, so many people are coming from, you know, downtown. Um, and then when they look up to uptown, what they see is shown here at the bottom of the next page, where you see a parking lot, you see the side of the stocks. And you have no idea that there's a wonderful, uh, home and garden shop, Almond Glow at the end of that street. Or, um, really that there's anything up there. So a lot of people make the call just by looking up, nothing we're checking out. But if you looked up and you saw trees and flowers and people, it's purple. In a small park, it'd be more compelling. Uh, thanks, Mike. So, so project purposes, as far as beautification goes, um, obviously Levelred is known for its beauty and Bavarian theme. So this replaces all of the cement blocks with trees, flowers, woodwork, and having people. It provides visitors a place to take in, but that's not using town. If you're right there under Icicle Mountain over there. Um, the trees in the parklet can be lit up for, uh, Christmas town, which, you know, expands and enhances that whole experience for everyone. And, uh, it also speeds the parking lot with greenery. So if we're walking down Front Street, they're, they're not looking at more parking. They're, they're having some more visual experience. Uh, so the function, another purpose would be including hungry visitors. But this will provide this sole public place for people to sit, rest, and socialize on the center block. Uh, it will help reduce crowding in Front Street Park because it'll be another place that people go and congregate and spend time. Um, it provides a resting point for people. As I mentioned, some people are walking, like if they're coming down from the adventure park, they're, they're walking a mile before they get there. Uh, have a place to sit, will keep all process. Um, and then there's obviously lots of those levels, um, and there's really trouble on that whole board or and then it also functionally keeps vehicles from entering Front Street coming into Levelred Park Lot. Um, which could put a next pedestrian because even though those current eagle blocks are there for that function, there's not one at either end. And looking out my gallery window, I see, I don't remember these people drive around the last one and off the curb on Front Street. Drive off this way, one minute later, they derive that way. One minute later, they drive back and they drive back up the curb. So just having a nice solid row of trees and planters, people that start to be really clear. You don't belong here. Which is of course important because there have been instances we've seen, but other communities have, um, aggressive drivers. So, um, and then the other function intended better for businesses. So, um, they attract more visitors from downtown Levelred, from up the hill to uptown. Right now, like I said, when you look up the hill, it doesn't seem to invite anybody. And so we wanna help make uptown Levelred a more enjoyable place for people to spend time. Not just walk through. Right now, it has a sense of like, this is the road into town, basically being for you. Um, and then it also makes this block feel more like part of town, which makes Levelred itself feel larger, a larger footprint and therefore, um, more raw. The next page, um, another purpose is to reinforce the overall Bavarian theme. So, um, wooden benches and planters will match the overall Bavarian theme. Uh, the artwork and inflammation display will be of Bavarian styling. The current location is in an industrial look. It's cement and, uh, Park Lot lacks the same charm as the rest of town has. And this space is the width of a C4 storefronts. So it's actually quite a significant visual impact. And really help create a comfortable way of Bavarian theme. So, um, yeah, organizations, organizations to provide input and guidance. Of course, the city of Levelred, Steering Committee, Timbo Commerce, Somos, uh, the DRB, and Autumn Leadership of the New Orange. So, um, and then also pointing out that there is a lot of new energy in uptown Levelred. So, uh, it's for new businesses there on that block, three hundred new ownership. And it will still be the home, the exciting visitor center, and also the Greater Levelred Historical Museum, hopefully sooner than later in the whole. Yes, we have a goal. We gotta bring people and then we'll, uh, build a parket. Museum will come. Um, and then as I mentioned, I did consult with the Autumn League Parade Association and they actually, so the original thought was that the, um, the benches in the parklet could all be arranged in a format that, um, suited them all far as far back as the current eagle blocks are for the day of the parade. So my original design included, uh, a day, parade day arrangement. So talking to, um, the people at Autumn League, they all agree that that's not gonna be necessary. That as long as we're within this nine-foot area of the original parking space, that that's not gonna interfere with the parade whatsoever. So we do have Autumn League in the house, beginning verification of that. Okay, so the project element. So first and very importantly, I'll note that nearly all of the elements of this project can be, are, aims to be incorporated into the final, um, Levelred pedestrian plaza ride. So the investment that we're taking now is a long-term investment. So I've met with Somos a couple times to ensure the continuity, to ensure cost savings for the city. So, uh, there are no certain between the boxes. So, uh, benches are kind of the, um, the cornerstone of the parklets. So we guess a lot of different ideas out there, but based on the conversation we've had so far, what sounds like is gonna be best is to have custom-built wooden benches. And that the city, uh, grounds code has the time and, and skill to build those, over the course of the season. Um, so the other option is purchasing the existing composite benches, which are already approved by the city in DRB. Um, and then again, when the pedestrian plaza is put in, the benches will be removed temporarily and then brought back here to this location and possibly another location. So, um, so that question came up when I was talking to Somos about, well, is it needs a match? Everything else that is throughout the rest of Levelred? And their feedback was that they would not think that the benches throughout Levelred should match. They'd rather like the idea of having different areas coming in to yield their benches. So I wanna tell more people who were in Bavaria on the trip to see like how, you know, if there were different parklets, how did the different ones, did they all match? Or were there the flavors and players? But, um, so that's something to think it was a good idea for people to be needing. Um, they also gave feedback on the actual layout that I had and recommended that I arrange them in closer clusters with nearest public signs so that families could all kind of sit together in a really close queue versus how you could spend your time in a space.
How old these do in the weather in the winter? Would they be moved to the sidewalk or something or sit out in snow pile long?
Um, well, I think it's similar to the way the benches are handled in Front Street Park. Where, you know, snows are moved around them. And, um, there's questions still, a lot of questions as far as pedestrian plaza. Is there gonna be a heating element in the street? Is that obviously scared of the snow and the cold factor? But, um, you know, this is the conversation that we're starting here and definitely, uh, curious to hear your thoughts and feedback you have. But, uh, as far as, you know, the businesses are all responsible for the thing. So their businesses and their benches and the city staff is responsible for it. Hearing the benches in other areas. So does that answer your question?
Well, sort of. I guess I'm thinking it seems that we have a issue with the stores keeping their area clean. So with the benches, are some of the benches, like the one on top, is that upon the sidewalk of the, uh, with its back against the building?
Yeah, this example is under, uh, on it. So that is.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be something to consider as far as it goes. You know, obviously composite benches are more resilient to the weather than wooden benches would be. But a good solid cedar with bench with, uh, you know, the proper lacquer and stains should last the ten years upward.
Are those composite benches in pictures?
Um, the top one is the custom wooden bench. Uh, the bottom one is the composite that there's already, you know, uh, like twenty of them are sewn down.
Thanks.
Absolutely. And I just take that home as an ask if anyone else has any questions so far. Uh, okay, so as far as the tree, the planters go, um, wooden planters, custom built by the city staff. Uh, cedar wood for the trees, they'd be either thirty by thirty or thirty-six by thirty-six depending on what the arborist would recommend with fruit balls. And then for the flowers, you know, about eighteen by eighteen inch. So big enough to either put one of those pre-planted flower baskets in or fill the soil and plant out. Um, so the trees, this is a funny conversation because there's, this is one area that there's a lot of directions to go. But, um, one of the fun and innovative ideas here was that the trees planted now in these planters can be grown out, um, between now and the time the pedestrian plaza goes in until a larger size, where then those trees will be put in the ground. So essentially, this parklet is gonna be acting as a tree nursery. It's for young and expensive trees to much larger, but would be much more expensive trees. And therefore saving the city money, um, um, tree investment. So then the natural next question is, well, what kind of trees? So there's the two options, it could be evergreen or deciduous. Uh, evergreen trees look better year-round. Uh, and they are better for the Christmas lights. Um, but the disadvantage is that they are wider at the bottom. She thinks of more of a space where people would watch. Whereas deciduous trees, uh, grows for those would be they provide shade. Uh, they're very green in fall and there's more space on the base, uh, for people. The cons then would be leaf littered and they don't look as Christmas. So talking with Somos, their, um, input was that the conifers would be the most useful long-term in the pedestrian plaza design. However, they also think that the deciduous trees would be better for guests, that they provide more shade. So probably a mix of both. It's the best. Um, and then for the pedestrian plaza, so, you know, from my first meeting with, um, they absolutely taken this idea into their new plan. So they are planning a similar small park in the same location in the pedestrian plaza. And, um, with one thing they wanna point out is that these trees could be planted in the ground. They're in that location unless there's underground tillies that can be disrupted by the trees roots. So either you have them in the ground there long-term or we would continue to have trees in planters. Uh, we also got, uh, at one of their meetings, a meet with a local arborist named Matt Shaw. He was very knowledgeable and helpful with, uh, uh, tree species and, uh, adaptations. So he also recommended, uh, there's a big tree nursery in Snohomish, which is, they specialize in buying nice-sized trees. Uh, and the species he recommended for, for deciduous would be the carrot river birch. Asman, maybe the sand cherry, or a smaller tree, or the purple wong, which get bigger, uh, what. And then for conifers, he recommended gold fir, granite fir, white fir, or tonfo. So we just have some clarity as far as going in that direction. And then for the flowers, you know, we'd take the tiny baskets that tie in with all the other beautiful baskets that Levelred is known for. So there's that, um, uniformity. And then other elements. So we're gonna need a trash can, so we need one of the, the solar powered big belly compacting trash cans. Um, for Christmas lighting, we're gonna need electricity. So fortunately, directly across the street, there is a street lamp and street lighting utility pool. Um, and there's also evidence of a recent cut directly across the road from there. So do you think it's gonna be easily doable to this amount of electricity possibly inside? And that then allows us to expand the light lengths Christmas towns and include uptown. Uh, another factor would be, you know, smoking signs, so because this will tend to be a shared public area, you know, smoking signs by the benches would be, um, encouraged. Uh, Somos liked that idea, but they're also suggesting that then there be designated place for smokers. So potentially, um, at one end of the parklet, having a cigarette at this local station. Go down there, taxi. I guess.
Does Matt Shaw the gentleman think of a steering panel?
Uh, so then the next uh uh element would be the artwork and information's display. So as you travel and go to the high power. You're gonna see information displays on every corner of the property and probable um. Area there are information displays in downtown. So the idea here would be create one that has a very Bavarian feeling. There's so far benches and trees, it could within the guidelines, but they don't have the super Bavarian look. So having a very Bavarian looking uh information display um would be beneficial. And then my thought was to create a as a four sided. Display that represented the four seasons period level. So we're showing summer, we're showing fall, showing winter, and we're showing spring and uh. I happen to know a photographer who would donate artwork that represents the area, so. Turn to the next page, you get the artwork that could be used um in the local area. Now, before we open our business here, I've been coming to Levalle for about twenty years, every year the summer. Every year in the summer, but never um had the inspiration or the idea to come back in fall. Or winter, the spring. So uh as far as you know, this being something that would enhance uh experience, but also. Increase the draw and bring more tourism and the four season style um. Get your things about Levalle right. So the idea would be to have um. A beautiful vivid nature photograph with a weed finding and information plaque below. Talk a little bit about the different seasons of Levalle and what to do. And then certain bases like waterfront park, like you have a bunch of how they. QR code to scan to find out to get them down there, because for some reason. To get from my gallery to Waterfront Park is very difficult for most people. It's two turns. But. It seems like a whole other world. Uh, whereas on the opposite end of that spectrum, we would not want to have weed finding to get them to. Alala Canyon because that's already over a long run. And does not need any more publicity, but uh an image like this can simply say. In the springtime, all of those around Levalle are covered in fossil. And um I would love to partner with the Chamber to create best content possible for those slaves. So Somos' feedback on our information display was that they they love the design as is. Uh, would not suggest having a tree too close to it because in my original layout, there was a tree at one of the corners. So we're gonna remove that. And then for scale, they're suggesting about five foot by five footprint and then about six feet tall. So not simply massive with something. It's a good side that you could look at at I. Any questions about that? So then going on to the timeline.
Dave's got a question online. Dave?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I had one question on. Pictures that are displayed there, um I would say that. We need to be careful on, they're beautiful pictures. Uh, I'm really. Hesitated to display that one of Alala Canyon. Because it's already been overrun by people uh in the springtime, there's hardly any place to park up there. So I think there's other pictures we could use to display the beauty of spring. Uh, in the valley, other than using the Alala Canyon, I think they're gonna find their way anywhere there anywhere before they. See it displayed so vividly, um. We've already had, last year there was over a hundred thousand visitors to Enchantments. And that's already been degraded because of those heavy traffic. Uh, situation, so I would just caution us on what we put, you know. I would, I would prefer that we do not advertise the sunflowers up at Alala. That'd be, that's a concern for me. That'd be my only point. The rest looks really, really, really good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So it's our mom doing the story, right?
How far have you um? Been communicating with the steering committee and the front street? Throughout the process or more recently?
Um, I was at their meeting in April.
Yeah, okay. And what was the reception?
All positive.
So like, hey, cool, we haven't even thought about that side yet, like, I don't think I've seen. The full schematic, the full drawing. I know that there's been a preliminary drawing, right, of of the front street project?
Well, the pedestrian plaza?
Yeah.
Yeah, the meeting after I met with the steering committee, Somos came and brought them a ten percent.
Okay, yeah.
So.
So did that include up up in this area, like you said, that?
But it's now like sticky notes and pencil.
Yeah, okay, so you're you're leaning up where this could, that they're interested that this could play.
It's in there.
Awesome, okay, cool, I think it's great, I think it's super cool.
Yeah.
And your enthusiasm, man, I'm stoked that you're behind it too.
Thank you.
Any community member that would come and present, this is it's awesome, but I feel like it's really awesome that that you're behind this, uh pushing it, yeah.
Yeah, you made a note that with a little thought.
A little bit, yeah, yeah, I judge presentation by weight.
Prove yourself back me up, right?
Yeah, it looks like it, yeah.
Um. But. You know, as a new business owner, if there's anything I can contribute to this community and like. If I'll match the momentum that you guys already built, I wanna break that. So if you do end up naming it the Peter Parklet.
That off the table.
Uh, anyhow. And outside, I do want to mention too, you know, we have a lot of support here, you know, all all the folks that came out. Hey, been here, feedback. Like, a lot of them, we have a moment, and since we're, we're almost.
Well, yes, well, everybody, it's already been said, uh, we brought the same beat, which is that area of his. Not much to draw to. The city going a long way. Again, an activity which is, you just sit there. But also just a less of a stand because. I've been down at the range a lot lately too, we shouldn't feel sorry for walking back and forth, but. You know, and there is no place to sit down. I think it's been great, I'm saying, just make the city work.
Yeah, and you both know that perspective, you know. I live on, you know, towards, we both live on the ice football brewing side, I don't get to. I don't get to the other side of town, I mean, it's too far to go all the way to Little Red's to get coffee, right? It's funny, right? So the reality, so it's a funny, it's a funny thing, when I do get up there and I do, and I walk here sometimes. The perspective of sitting there in that park, when you look down, I mean, it's such a cool look to be able to sit there and have the opportunity to sit there and look. During the winter festivals and some of these things, it's a neat perspective that is, needs to be capitalized and like promoted. And that that's right, yeah.
Yeah, like the view from Wisconsin Dining Room.
Right.
Is actually one of the best in town.
Yeah, yeah.
You got like a town. Or soon to be the visitor center is gonna be drawing people up to that corner.
Yeah.
But once they come out the doors from visitor center, they have a choice, left or right.
Yeah.
We want them to look left, they go, oh, there's something there, right? Not that they don't go right, they're gonna go right, everyone is gonna end up downtown also, but this just gets them going.
Right.
Uh, yes.
I have one thing to say about this weekend, we had a prime example of what could happen down there. We had a fantastic Mayfest parade, I think it was the best one I've seen in ages. We marched through town at crowds and breaks, we got to the stomachs, nobody. I mean, there were ten people from Patonese to Gustavs. I mean, it was totally completely dead. What a waste of space after we had such a great parade. And then we just figured out that I, and so that's a great example this weekend of what. Could happen and could be at that end of town. And also I want to say that I spent several years in California, and they have something they call parklets or uh pocket parks. And they're fantastic, inclusive community and fantastic for visitors. And this would just be another enhancement for our downtown area, so I'm I'm fully in favor of this addition.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, when uh the instructions for the festival was that it ends at Gustavs. But I don't think any of the parade made it to Gustavs, they all got basically to the site with cement blocks and then south and congregated. So, yeah, I mean.
It's like you said, Travis, it used to be that we thought that's all way that into town, nobody went up there. And now town really starts there and spreads out all the people you talk about. Over tourism and so many people here, but if we spread out what we have. Over that extra two blocks, it makes a big difference and it's beautiful.
Definitely, let's have a museum there and a chamber.
I, let's go ahead and finish up because we are out of our time and do have other things tonight, so. And and I don't think this is um a controversial or questionable um in terms of the support, so I think.
Yeah, I've had to see where it was definitely. But um so there is one factor that is up for for consideration, so as I mentioned, as far as the timeline goes, it sounds like what's. Most likely to happen is that that city staff will build up the benches over the next winter. And install a whole spring of twenty twenty six. But the question is. Question is, can we get? A smaller, simpler version with three benches and some flowers in this area for this summer? And what that would look like would be either store bought benches from. A big box store that would look kinda like the one here or. Uh, investing in a couple of the currently approved city benches. Uh, if you look on the next page, you'll see a few examples, bench in about forty bucks. Versus the current approved city bench that are two thousand five hundred dollars. Or possibly. Are there two benches somewhere else in town that could be up? There's currently nine of these benches, um all just right around the old street. And there's six over by the food park. So two of the benches get moved up. And then as far as planters go, um down by the festival, they have these wooden or hanger planters that are actually attached to people's blocks. Um, so I'm sure we could get volunteers that would assemble the benches and plant with planters and attach them to the blocks. So the question is, um, can we get funding, a small amount of funding? In twenty twenty five to two benches, two three planters. So we have something for people for this time.
I have a question, it might be. For me, um. Would the parks department be maintaining the plan in Foxton's doing or?
They're not like they're talking to the poles of that would be here.
Yes, so the one person I was not able to actually meet with the last few months was Andy. And so my understanding is she's the one that manages. The labor force to build the watering. If needed, I will go with a water water defender once in a while this summer.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Correct. Yeah. Just to clarify, my my understanding is, so this, this is a great idea, great late work, but this is not. You're you're putting an idea, this is what I think the city should do. And you have a lot of energy behind it, you're willing to help, but ultimately this is a. Staff is gonna need direction from us on what we want you to do. And we're gonna basically, you're gonna hand this off to the city for design and implementation. Um, and hopefully putting something in front of us to vote on so that we can get it going as soon as possible. Um, is that my, is that fair understanding? So based on that.
I understand the design and the layout, the only thing that really needs to be chosen is the actual design for the benches. As far as like where it goes, what, you know.
Assuming, assuming the city adopts your.
If the city did not want to take time to do all that, you could adopt what I. Or you could push it where they want to begin.
Yeah. So I, just in the interest of time and moving forward, I think it's a great idea, I love. Utilizing space that we have up there and that view is ridiculous and accomplishes so many things that we need and it's also. Got some continuity moving into the next phase of the downtown planning, so I like the idea of moving forward on something like this. I have no idea what a budget should be for it, what's reasonable with cutting asphalt and getting power and all that stuff, but. Uh, I think that we should direct the staff to try and put something together for a temporary. Uh, solution that that people can rest in for the the summer if possible, if that's feasible. And you guys can say, that's not feasible, uh, and then. Moving forward, I'd love to see a proposal that we can vote on for a parklet according to this one. We all cut a rough outline. Anybody else agree?
I would agree.
Okay, so does anyone else have any questions or comments or? Everything's perfectly clear.
Pretty clear.
Okay, so what would next steps look like for me, if there are anything else I can provide?
I don't think at this point.
Very thorough, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. So as far as whether or not there would be um energy and funding for something for this summer. Um, we knew that within a month or so, we would know that. We would know it, we would have a backup plan where we're creating a fundraiser. Fund it as a community rather than asking the city to fund it.
I would think that. I'm trying to like you say, you laid it out, figure out the the path to that with the city and. Creating a budget proposal like, hey, so we have, how much we need to raise or if somebody are interested, I'm. At first glance, I'm not interested, you know, in what, I don't know what two benches does in front of all these center block. I I think it's like throwing, it's like, it's throwing, you're putting lipstick on a pig, right? It's like throwing good money at bad, I'm not sure what. What that does temporarily aesthetically, it creates some some seating, but. I just don't know temporarily, that word temporary is scary to know.
Right, I can answer that question though.
Yeah.
So the benches would go and look at that first picture where the red car is, it'd go in that space there. Um, so that both that fence cars come coming in and also you look at page two, the photograph. When you look up the street from downtown, instead of looking at parking lot, you see people. Benches and plants. So it really is an incisment for people to come up the hill from that.
I know, but then if you, if you turn the page, the last page, this is what I see, when I hear temporary, it's not what you're explaining on. On page two and aesthetically showing and rallying, yeah, this is beautiful, I don't think you're temporarily. Is your temporary solution this or this? I'm not sure what one clear, what that looks like.
Benches, it's basically what other businesses already have out.
Try to get that, but just please point your finger at this picture.
Down the street, you see lots of benches defined as. That are, you know, with the pitch, you know, kind of past those, um, and then. The, let's just check over there, the font has very seating area out front, there's bakery and then. Uh, chocolate next door is also doing cleaning up seating and tables, but that's in private. That business next to it is a public area, but then also has flowers and kind of. And in between those three areas to be private or one day public, it does create enough of an impact that it's worth it. Dana?
And I do think. Even if it is just a couple benches, cannot underestimate the value of a. Of the seating as a rest there. We have a lot of elderly visitors and we have a lot of families with small children, the population's prone to exhaustion and overheating.
Yeah.
It is an incredibly long stretch from. That portion of Sun Street.
Yeah, so then we start again, you like you said, do we start with, we have. Two big long benches, I mean, that's that's creating seating for six to eight people. That's very much in and out throughout the day, I mean, that's a temporary solution, if it's seating that's. Needed, it's a blast for the city if they can.
And you also, and for me at the chamber, I hear frequently from the folks who do have the private seating. Constant frustration of people who are not their patrons, sitting in their seats because they are desperate for a place system. Constant frustration of people who are not their patrons sitting in their seats because they are desperate for a place system. They don't necessarily, they're not, you know, the second. The woman who was left by her family, abandoned by. For worthwhile hours is. An exception, not the rule. But a lot of those just need free moments to rest and recover and then on.
Right. Well, I think if whatever we do, I mean, I. I mean, I think it should probably be more than a couple. And I think it should be, I mean, temporary doesn't. Necessarily mean, I mean, if it's going to be, I don't want people fighting over the two spots.
I kind of like to see that.
You want to see it? So if I forgot that all of that space, I mean, they put just getting some benches up, but. Yeah, I. I don't know if a couple would. Do it, but.
I'd like to see at least a temporary proposal with enough to spread them out. Up there and we can use them elsewhere. We already use these benches else all over town. We got them down at the Waterfront Park, Long Pathway.
Well, let's. Let's move on for now and let's, we'll revisit this with some ideas of what could go up there in the short term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So roles and responsibilities, so.
Thanks, I'll be quick. Council, at your regular, regular meeting tonight, you'll be voting to approve some minor changes to the ethics code. I just want to take a couple of minutes during the study session to provide a reminder about section two point two four oh five oh C. Which reads officials need to be mindful that making special requests of staff, even when the response does not benefit that official personally. Put staff in an awkward position, therefore city council members shall refrain from directing staff from making special requests. The reason I bring this up is because it was brought to my attention that last month, a council member attempted to use their position as a council member to influence. One of our parking enforcement officers to reverse a parking violation. When the person receiving the ticket had parked directly in front of a no parking sign. This occurred while one of our newest employees was on his week, first week of training and put our staff in an awkward position. All ticket disputes must be done online or in person at the parking office, which is open Monday and Friday eleven to four. I also wanted to remind you that while the city's social media policy does not prohibit city council members from engaging with constituents on social media platforms. Doing so does introduce some issues, public records requests among them. If you do feel the need to interact with constituents on social media, you are encouraged to state clearly that while you are a city council member. Your opinions are your own and you are not acting in an official capacity on this platform. And that should protect your private social media account from a public records request. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on rate and fee schedule update. Hey, get that.
Got a whole bunch of stuff. I'll go first. Under the water section, I've included the resolution that we asked for. The churches, government tool. Was mine.
And there were a couple of corrections for the fest hall. They didn't include the bar pending in the package price. So we didn't do that. And then there have been a lot of requests for notary services for non-city items. And by law, if I say law, we're allowed to charge fifteen dollars for that, so that's what I put in there. But if it's a city item, we will still do that at no charge.
And the power, there's also a palace charge that was added to the. Solid legal section. We are exploring with. Sorry to break this up with, uh, we're exploring with wind. The potential for them to provide a much cheaper pallet flexion service that then they would compost out of their facility. So our goal here is to have this be a charge that's similar to what it looks like for an extra pay pickup.
Yeah, that's what shows on here right now, right?
Yeah. And then if if. When did it take to move forward with that? It would be much cheaper for people to just use one type, which would be our goal, which would be so exciting.
But if somebody puts a pallet next to the trash can or a bag of trash next to the trash can, it's the same cost, you just got to pay an extra fee to have that. So good job, yeah.
Yeah.
And the price depends on whether it's a week here or a week out, right? Like the difference of like seven dollars or fifteen dollars or something.
I'm sorry, I'm still looking.
Would it be possible to just? Say that so people don't have to fish for the information like. Rather than referencing other sections, we just say what those charges are. I think that would be helpful.
And then the other thing that I added in there is. We did the policy, the room rental policy, and I just updated the. For the non-profit rate to be twenty five dollars per day instead of twenty five dollars per hour. So that does match.
The other questions on that? Okay, staying done, we'll move on to the park policy.
So the park policy just got emailed out to today. And so I'll kind of step through it, but really the goal of this policy is to have a clear two-page document that you can send to people. Who are using our parks, who requires use request process. And also, as we are going through the comprehensive plan of the development right now, we are working at. Some substantial overhauls to our parks code. It would be then driven by the contract. So we're not wanting to fully revise the code at this point, knowing that the contract is underway, those changes will be coming, but the point here. Is to just make a few minor changes to clarify in this policy that would then be adopted by you. How prioritize the fall haul usage is one of the specific things in you. Everything else is, aside from the confetti, everything else is directly from the parks code. This is just putting it in more simple terms for people to read and have this one pitch document. I think most of it should be pretty straightforward about competition, littering, weapons of fireworks, alcohol, drug use is not allowed. Some of the items I let go were the. I mentioned the ball use fields. So this does say that local sporting groups have priority for preserving and using city ball fields. We've had a few instances where non-local groups have come in to use the fields for tournaments, but it conflicted with. Like already scheduled. Like other sporting groups using that. And so. I think in one of those specific instances. We didn't have clear policy. It first come, first served, and I believe that the term that came to us first, but we did know that. That is in the season that we would have normal sporting here. So we put that in here to give priority to local groups. Over non-local groups. And then the other piece to highlight in here was section sixteen to the commercials. The way our code is written right now, the parks code is super explicit about only Front Street Park, but it doesn't detail. What parks news looks like in other non-city parks. The way we've always interpreted the code is that. The same requirements of the nonprofit activities apply to other parks, but the Bavarian theme doesn't apply to other parks that are from city. So this just clarifies that and is very explicit that Front Street Park. Like it's written in the code does require that it's for non-profit activities. And consistent with the old world Bavarian theme. For all other city parks, we only have the requirement for the non-profit activities, but not the. Those are the only real things that are just directly as a code.
How does the farmer's market fall into all this?
The farmer market is, it would be under the all other perks of the nonprofit. The farmer market itself is a nonprofit.
Right. So do you call them educational, cultural, or artistic?
Cultural.
Or does this need to be expanded? Because I don't see the language actually saying that they can do what they have been doing for years. Up above, I see public markets specifically listed out. Under the old world Bavarian theme for commercial activities that's not associated with nonprofits, but. Seems like this doesn't quite capture it.
We could add public markets.
What's that?
We could add public markets.
Do the all other city parks portion.
Do sporting events count as educational or?
Uh, this was just for the commercials.
Yeah, commercials without a point, right?
I'm trying to think if we have any. Not that I can think of. There'd be a commercial use for your this nonprofit.
We we've had a request from someone to do something like a tough mutter type event, but it was a for-profit venture. He said, if you can get a nonprofit fiscal sponsor, then we can entertain this, but they weren't interested in doing that. They wanted to make money, so they told him no. When was that? You know, when when was that? It was within the last two years.
Anything else? Well, I know if you do think anything after the meeting, I know you don't have time to review this in detail, and I'm sorry.
All right. Any other suggestions for future agenda items? Caught up quick now, we're caught up. Thing rising to the top. If not, we'll go ahead and take a break.
We have plenty of time.
Yeah. All right, let's go. Call the Levonburg City Council for May thirteenth, order the stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I can question myself.
Mike, why don't you start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Right. We'll call Sharon Waters. Let's try it.
Anne Hesper.
Shane Thayer.
Travis McMaster.
Mike Bedard.
Zeke Reister.
All right, everybody is here. Count it four, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
By shins. Seconded by Aaron. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passage unanimously. All right, I am going to change the point where I make my. Charge of what our expectations are up to the beginning of our agenda items. That we are to be respectful of each other and acknowledge that it's okay to disagree. Prior to making comments. You must be recognized by the chair. Please address the council as a whole and not individuals. You can come up and state your name and address. Keep your comments focused on the topic that's being discussed unless you're making comments. On items not on the agenda. Okay, so our first. Time is for comments on items not on the agenda. Does anybody want to come up? I see somebody coming.
Good evening, Mayor Florrie, Councilman, and City Staff. And members of the community. My name is Lijia Robinson, one twenty-six Commercial Street, and I want to thank you for your time and the work you do for us. I've had the opportunity to be actively engaged across multiple city boroughs by admission and vision communities to PRSA work sessions. I show up and not because I hold a title, but I believe because I believe in the responsibility of being a world-class resident. At the most recent PRSA meeting, I listened to Finance Director Chantal Skyler explain the issue regarding this levy trip. I know the details are being formally assessed, addressed tonight, so I won't re-explain it. But I do want to have the sign, there are eighty percent of our vote is in our two city precincts ordered level. The public intent is clear, this is not about pointing fingers, it's about honoring that trust. And to be clear, this is not a reflection on what PRSA, which acting in good faith and with the community. It's about ensuring institutional coordination lives up to the clarity of a public direction. That's why I'm asking this council and mayor to formally remind Assistant Wes Cornelius to appear publicly at the meeting when the PRSA vote is voted on. This has been just my request. It reflects what I've heard and felt from others across our community. That when public trust is effective, public accountability and ability should follow. We need to create the opportunity and space for the exposition of responsibility of all themselves together. And I want to be clear, I fully support the rule. If the rules allow for a vote tonight, I hope to see it approved. This request isn't about delaying, it's about transparency, participation, and trust. We've seen what happens when we don't create that space. In March, Commissioner Charles Smith announced a land swap that halted the Tumwater Cross Project, as reported by the law board that go on March fourteenth. The station, the statement changed according to the lead, not the lead. But later, the Forest Service confirmed no such swap was in progress. Explanation mattered because it spoke directly to the integrity of the individual relationship with their community. And the missed opportunity for accountability left a gap in our public process. We have a chance to do things differently now. And that starts how we show up, speak honestly, and take responsibility together. This conversation isn't about public responsibility, isn't just theoretical, it's something we teach through passion, modeling and participation. As a teacher in room one oh two at Alpine Lakes Elementary, I work every day with students learning values like kindness, respect, and empathy. Accountability isn't one of our formal, formal monthly truths, but we model it constantly. Yesterday, I dropped off a letter from our students about a jobathon, which Andrea will be distributing to. Right now, our class is preparing for its first ever jobathon, an inclusion event. That'll give every student a chance to participate, contribute, and feel connected to something larger than themselves. For our students in room one oh two, this is the first time they've been able to participate as a full class in a school-wide event. This is what makes them this more than just a jobathon. It's a moment of inclusion, affirmation, and belonging. On Thursday, we'll be visiting city hall to say thank you. And as they walk through these doors, they're learning from how we respond to challenges and to each other. Thank you for your time, and if you want to make a damnation afterwards, I have a QR code.
All right, I'll see you guys on Thursday. Thank you very much.
Thanks, BJ.
All right, anybody else? Is there anybody else outside?
Yes, we got Amanda Nichols and Valery. But nobody's raising their hand.
Okay.
So how many people do we have from the public? Two?
One. Two, one, two. Okay, our next item, I'm going to read a proclamation, a proclamation designating May eighteenth to twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five as National Public Works Week. People, purpose, and presence, and this is important because this is the backbone of what we need to do and get done. Day to day. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services. That are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to public health. High quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Leavenworth. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided. Without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals. Who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government. And the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation. Water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings. Other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Leavenworth. To gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public work. And the public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty five marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week. Sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Thou now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Leavenworth, Washington. That May eighteenth to twenty fourth of two thousand twenty five is Public Works Week. The city of Leavenworth calls upon its citizens to join with representatives of American Public Works Association. And government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies. And government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies. Designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees. And to recognize the substantial contributions they made. To protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. Signed this thirteenth day of May by Carl Florrie, Mayor, City of Leavenworth. Thank you to our public works. Now moving on to our action items. First one is Code of Ethics Update, Andrea.
Um, so this is just the same as I presented to you at the study session, um, last. On the twenty-second of April. Um, if you have any other questions or? Anything, let me know.
I have a question. It says in here, this. Um, I, what? Back to the study session today, this is a, that applies what was discussed. No, what was presented to us, it wasn't really discussion, was presented to us is in here. With the social media. What is that? What, that verbiage that was, was told that we were required to?
So, so, hold on, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, at our last meeting, we reviewed these changes that Andrea was going for the, for the ethics. I just took five minutes to remind you of one element of this, which was not directing staff. And then as an aside, I said, we don't, I, I talked about the social media, how we don't have a policy prohibiting any council members from participating in. Community discussions on social media platforms. However, doing so could make your personal account subject to public records requests.
Yep.
So in order to prevent that, if you are going to participate. Disclose that you are a member of the council, but you're speaking on your own behalf and you're not representing the city. If you make that statement, then you won't be subject to public records requests.
According to the city's attorney or according to you?
This was according to. The city's attorney, yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure, yeah, strong. So i- is this per post or can I put this in my bio that says anything, you know, it's, it's one of those caveats, right? Anything that I say, well, it's a blanket, it's written in my bio.
Many profiles that have said, even like at the genesis of social media. All thoughts presented here are my own, my own, and not those of my employer.
It's a, I just because I don't wanna, I don't wanna, and I don't, I, I definitely had a, an interest in the parking discussion a couple of weeks ago. And I don't. I don't wanna shy away from, from some of that, and I think that I'm. Uh, look, I think everybody thinks they're fair and balanced, so that's not necessarily the case to even say that, but I feel like I just. From the city's standpoint. I don't, these are my independent thoughts and not representative of the city, but also. There are things that we are doing that are really good and good intentioned and get misconstrued as the city. And so I just want to. Have an open dialogue and I listen to our constituents, but also explain. What the realities are that the city's doing, if the city won't or doesn't, or chooses not to. And I don't be the crusader and take this on, and I haven't, you know, found an interest to do that since that evening.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna shy away from getting engaged with.
As a city council member or as Travis McMaster, as your own opinions versus?
Because this is public record, of course, as just Travis McMaster and not as a city official.
Right.
What's your question?
The purpose of my statement was about public records requests and how to protect your private account from being subject to them.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure, yeah, just, yeah, I wanted to clarify, it came from our city's attorney and, because I do want to be protected. And then putting a blanket statement, but instead of every single time I make a post, write that, and that's a message to read through that, and then get to what I'm trying to, it dilutes, it takes away from the message.
I think for me, just though.
See bio. Okay, I just wanna make, I just wanna clarify that, so, thank you.
So I, I've also, I'll have to say that there has been a case though where, where that wasn't. Where somebody was using their personal and didn't state upfront at the time. And it was challenged and. It was subject to public records and it, it was a mess. So I wouldn't trust that putting it at the top and not when you're, because when you're commenting, people are still seeing you. As a councilman. I'm just saying, I don't know that I would. Want to dig that risk. I, I have something to add, but Zeke has his hand raised. Zeke?
Yeah, um, I just want to get a clarification on, um. You know, complaints or, or investigations, so they get sent to the city clerk, which I assume is Andrea. Is that just a matter of that she sees them, but they, they keep on, they get still passed directly to the ethic officer? I mean, there isn't a way that. That the city looks at these and says, this is justified, this isn't justified, it's just that they get passed to her. She sees it, no matter, no matter what, they still get passed on to the ethic officer, there's no, there's no filter here, is there?
Do filters.
They'll come to me and then I will present them to Selby and the mayor. And if confrontation with one of the council members needs to happen, they can do that. Prior to it being sent to the ethics officer.
So does that mean that you, like Selby and, and the mayor would make a decision whether to pass this on to the ethics officer? Is that what, is that what we're saying?
I would let her know that we have received a complaint. Uh, and that we're investigating it and, um, so that she would know about it. And, uh, but she, you know, even though we send it to her. She has the right to say, I don't feel this is. An ethics violation. So we'll, we'll do our due diligence and then we'll hand it off to her and she'll do her due diligence, so.
Zeke, believe it or not, I, I've received a complaint and. I was approached by Selby and had a discussion about it, and I think that. If I reacted a certain way, it's gonna go towards the ethics, if it reacted as, reacted a different way. And made amends and apologized and did certain things, that was satisfactory, I think there's, there is some sort of level of. Taking care of it here, if it needed to be escalated, it would have been escalated. But I think that my, my resolution was satisfactory with the city and. I think that that's, that's kind of the limous test, I believe.
And it's also by request of our ethics officer as well.
We can handle it in-house, that's great.
She would rather them come to us first. And then be sent on to her, so that was, that was her request.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that if it was, that whatever it was that people raised up, that. The ethic officer was aware and it wasn't sort of.
Yes, when she came to our retreat in November, this is a change that she recommended that we made.
Well, okay. Alright. Okay, good enough, thanks.
When, did you have something?
Yeah, we're saying that. I mean, nothing other than just. I think we need to be careful, I mean, if we're, I get having the blanket disclaimer on your. Social media page, but if you are presenting a perspective that's informed by your time or your experience on the council. I feel like that enters a gray area like Carl said, where you're putting yourself at risk. And, um. You know, if, if you're commenting on something on, say, like the Leavenworth Facebook page. It. And another council member feels like they need to correct the record for another reason, then you enter, now, then there's. There's the risk of a serial meeting, even if we have our requisite disclaimer, it just, it gets.
Sorry, so what do you think? So the city shuts down, it doesn't communicate in a forum. And that's the, that's the hard thing, and I thought, you, you know that too.
It's not that the city doesn't communicate, but I think we as individuals need to have the risk assessment as far as. I mean, there's more than one way to do that, I mean, other than commenting on the thread, you see the person's face, you can. We do live in the age of Google, we can reach out to that person individually and say, hey, I saw this on Facebook. We don't need to yell in the town square necessarily, right? I mean, there are other options available if we wanted to. Have that kind of communication.
Or recommend them, they come to a council meeting, I mean.
That too.
Or direct you to city website.
Or the city website.
The city's social media.
Those things, because that's where the city's gonna post, it's gonna be on our own. Too, we're not gonna engage them.
Yeah.
I, I recall there was a. Another, in the same thread that we're talking about, um, Travis, there was another member from the Partner Advisory Committee. Who didn't identify themselves as a member of the committee, simply said, I'm going to be attending the next Partner Advisory Committee on Thursday, I encourage you to come. Just simple, straight.
Yeah.
You know? Um, and that's what we do need to encourage these people who have complaints about is to come to the committees, come to the council, reach out to the city directly. Because complaining to Facebook.
Yeah, it doesn't do anything.
Is not gonna result in any action from any, uh, from me or any of my staff or you guys.
Right. But for the record, I've just removed myself from that group, so. Sorry, friends of Leavenworth, Travis out.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance seventeen eleven Code of Ethics Update.
Second.
I have another question.
Okay, moved by Shane, just seconded by Travis, and go ahead.
Uh, so in the, in the write-up, I think it's from Andrea. It talks about, um. How the F-one form will need to be filed by the mayor and the city council once we cross the threshold of two thousand voters.
Hmm.
Um, we're getting pretty close.
Yes.
And so my question is. In the section of this update. Where we've already stricken some language about the ten-day appointment, those sort of things.
To have disappeared.
Can we reference that, that we're like keeping an eye on it, because we're getting so close, so that it's also very clear.
Previous one.
That we're creeping up on this and this is, this is coming.
Yes, the previous one, it was all in here and now it seems to have disappeared, so.
Okay, so that would be an amendment that I would recommend, is that, that we're keeping an eye on it, because we're getting really close to that threshold, so that we don't miss it.
Correct.
Because it's probably happening within the next couple of election cycles or something, possibly.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially with all the apartments opening.
Yes, yes, exactly.
We're gonna get, we're gonna be increasing our population soon.
True.
Do I need to amend my motion then?
Sure do.
Yeah, you should.
As amended.
As, as amended.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution thirteen. Oh, sorry, ordinance, uh, the Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance seventeen eleven Code of Ethics, Ethics Update as amended.
Second. Okay, we're rushing, seconded by Travis, any other question?
Wait, do I correct the record, old mayor? Oh, I was the second name.
I, I took, I took the old second.
It was also Mike, by the way.
It has to be.
Well, that's what I thought, but, okay, sorry. You two sit further apart. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passage unanimously.
Thank you.
Um, action item ten is all covered.
Yeah, is there an opening for public discussion on that matter?
Would you like to make a comment?
Well, it's past the vote now, but. Yes, I would.
Okay, make a comment.
I'm Duncan two twenty-four Cascade, and I, I brought this up to Andrea before, and the, when I was going through the RCWs on the, on the. Public Disclosure Commission, the requirement was. Uh, two thousand voters in the last general election, or if required by local ordinance. The city of Leavenworth requires it by local ordinance, because it says in there. Uh, the mayor and city council shall report to the PDC. And so the two thousand, and my, my recommendation was to. Defer to that and not say that they shall report it. Or to say shall report it if required by. Uh, but it doesn't say that, it says shall report, and there is a ten thousand dollar fine for not reporting. Uh, up to, and so it was a concern before and it remains a concern, because that language hasn't changed, as far as I can tell. So currently, according to the, uh. Guidelines, the local ordinance says that the council shall report. And I don't think that's necessary, I think that should be addressed, otherwise you guys are all subject to. penalties, at least as far as I can read, you obviously can be. But, uh, because it does say that. You shall report, so that was mine.
And I, I will run that by our city attorney, that's why I didn't mention that, and I will love the council well, but.
Yeah, if required, I think would be really great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does that affect? What we just accomplished?
She's gonna check with our.
Yeah, I gotta check with the city attorney.
And then we'll get back if.
And it might be a driven error, and we can change it.
So it doesn't change anything, it'll be just a little bit, but you'll get back to us.
And if I need to do another ordinance, change it, then I will do another ordinance, change it.
Well, the language has an exception in it first, and then it says, in accordance with the RCW, so they kind of cancel each other out.
So I'll fix that.
Alright, our next action item is Resolution thirteen twenty twenty-five, this is simply reaffirming our. Commitment and participation in the Shalane Douglas Transportation Council, it's a governance agreement, um. We periodically, the only time these get changed actually is when there's a new member on board and we have to all. Agree to adopt them, re-adopt them, but there's not really any changes in this, so. I would just entertain a motion that we would. Re-adopt these, this governance agreement.
Leavenworth City Council hopes to approve Resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty-five, Shalane Douglas Transportation Council Governance Agreement.
Second. Moved by Mike, seconded by Clint, who was closer to me. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. The next is, uh, Commercial Street Pedestrian Guard Rail, Guard Rail Project Acceptance, Andy.
Thank you, Mayor, so this is just the formal acceptance of the pedestrian guard rail project that's completed on Commercial Street. Uh, the contractor got in there and finished it within three working days, it was a good project. If you've been by, it looks really good, so again, this is just the formal acceptance of that one.
Entertained a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the Commercial Street Pedestrian Guard Rail Project and authorize the mayor. To execute the associated final contract voucher certificate.
Second.
By Travis, seconded by Ann, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. Action item twelve, Fleeger petition to annex and set a public hearing for the annexation. Maggie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, this is just a formality, I did bring this to you during a, uh, March study session. Um, and there was a discussion about moving this, uh, request forward, and this is just formalizing that we will be moving this request forward and. I'm setting a date for a public hearing.
Could you speak up please, so I can fairly hear you?
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, this is a, sorry, I'm not feeling well. Uh, so this was brought to you March twenty-fifth during a study session, we have a request to annex. Uh, this is property, um, that is unad- unaddressed on West Benton Street. And this is just formalizing that request and moving it forward for a public hearing set June tenth.
Questions? Or entertain a motion?
I have some questions.
No, okay.
Maggie, can you add some clarification about, um, how this property would gain access since it's? Not really on a rate of way?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, that. This went through a boundary line adjustment in the county, and I had. Requested that they, uh. Look at the access and. Uh, anyway, they didn't follow my recommendation, so in order to develop this property, we will need a, an easement. Which from, uh, the neighboring property owner, uh. From my understanding, they're working on that easement language, uh. And that's where that lands.
Okay, so they actually don't have access to their parcel right now? Is that problematic for our annexation process?
Not that I'm aware of, but. Before the hearing, I'll get some public comments and some comments about.
Do you know if they're working on getting an easement from the neighbor? Alright.
I've talked a lot about that.
Okay, uh. There's. There's kind of a zoning discrepancy between what the county has on record versus what we're showing. There's kind of a zoning discrepancy between what the county has on record versus what we're showing in the packet. Um, can you speak to that at all?
Uh, that's, uh, I mean, that was a part of his request, it's a separate parcel, and that's something I'm working with the assessor's office on. Because it is being taxed.
Right.
Uh, as a, the, you mean adjacent?
Yeah.
The property that's like a split zone, weird.
Yeah, well, I guess. They used to own it and then he sold it, but.
Yeah, so it's taxed as a city, as within city limits, so.
The adjacent houses, right? Where would we have city services? For, for a future development connection, where, where would those come in?
It would be on the West Benton, right away.
Okay, so where it kind of angles and dead ends right before the property.
Actually, no, I'm not, we talked to him about serving off the. Right, yeah.
So, but for future development, it would still come up that.
It'd be off West Benton, but to that property itself, it would be off. Mine Street on the north side. Um, he's been working with the neighbor to obtain easement to Berkins Water Sealer Services to the parcel.
Okay, so he needs utility easement and an access easement.
Yeah.
In two different locations.
Right.
I'm sorry, we've met with him a few times and so now I'm trying to remember where it will. But you can't get the utilities until the annexes, so this was kind of the first step.
See?
Yeah, um, my question was, some of those, um. On the following conditions, I just needed to know what, uh, on number three, it says. The city will require assumption of city indebtedness by the area proposed to be annexed, so. Just could someone clarify what assumption of city indebtedness means?
That's just legally that I don't. Feel comfortable explaining, um, it's on all of the annexations, it's in the state law.
Hmm, okay, all right, because I sure didn't know what it was, so.
I, and I clarified that during a hearing, I, I can give you that information, this is just. The formality to.
Set the hearing.
Right, okay, all right, thanks, Maggie.
Yeah.
Can I ask Andrea a question? Can I ask Andrea a question?
Sure.
Andrea, is this the one that we looked at?
Yes.
It is, okay, thank you.
I'd entertain a motion, Leavenworth City Council moves to accept process in the repro- the proposed annexation of parcel number. Two four one seven one 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 three zero three two zero. With conditions as outlined in the petition and set a public hearing for the annexation of parcel number. Two four one seven one 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 three zero three two zero for June tenth, twenty twenty five at seven P M.
Second.
Okay, moved by. Clint, seconded by Shane, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. Next is a PUD easement, Salvi.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, the Shland County Public Utilities District reached out to the city. Requesting to add a new utility pole behind City Hall to serve a potential new development. Uh, this is the lot that's for sale directly behind City Hall, um, adjacent to the short-term rental. So I discovered that there is no easement of record for those utility lines and requested that the PUD furnish us with an easement, which they did. Then I realized that. Uh, we knew they had the pool property as well, because the easement they turned back was just the City Hall lot. And then there's no easement for the pool lot, and then the rest of the City Hall lot, which is the pool parking lot. So I asked them to amend it to include that lot as well, um, so that is what is in your packet as tab thirteen. This has been reviewed by the city's attorney. I would recommend that the council approve this easement.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign easement for overhead and or underground utility for the Public Utility District number one of Shland County.
Root by Mike, seconded by Travis, any other questions?
Salvi, do you know whether or not the PUD will be able to install that pole without taking down? The trees that line the parking lot, because they, they basically block the view of all the power lines right now, which is really nice.
So I did a field investigation, our property line goes all the way to the house. And if you look at the, where utility lines are located, there, that, that pole will be on the, should be. Located on the other side of the driveway that services that short-term rental. Not the City Hall side, to be in line with the other poles.
Okay.
Carl, is this the properties that, um. They wanted to come off Whitman Street?
Yeah, it's coming off the whip.
Okay, and so what is this, gonna let them do that?
This pole may service that, that new development.
New development will come from this pole. It will be down in line with these other poles.
So it'll be between the house and the existing trees, right, where the rest of the power lines run right now?
Correct.
Do you know if they have the capability of getting in there without damaging our trees?
I did not ask that question.
Can we request that?
Yeah, when they, I'm assuming they'll have to get a permit from us before we do the season, when I first season to them, I will request that, yes.
I didn't know we had half streets. And split the lot.
We have quite a few.
And they're coming off Whitman.
Yes, they won't be coming from the City Hall.
The, the parking is coming off a whip. But the electrical service is coming from down below. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Those.
Abstaining.
Abstaining, one abstention from Sharon.
Why is it that you're abstaining?
Because I, um. Didn't understand, you know, from reading this, what was going on, and I would need to know a lot more. Because there were issues before twice on this property that I can remember.
Is that right?
Yes.
Not associated with power though.
Thank you.
But one of them was coming off Whitman Street. That was an issue.
All right. We will move on to, uh, fourteen, interlochen, local agreement with Shland County for River Recreation Manager, Salvi.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, we had this discussion at your April twenty twenty second study session. Staff from the Natural Resources Department of Shland County presented. The River Recreation Manager position and goals that they feel an in-house person that is currently residing within Shland County. Uh, could accomplish through an interlocal agreement, um, this year, and then we can revisit, revisit this idea again. Uh, for next, for next year, um, so I got direction at the study session to bring forth this ILA. Um, and that's why it's here.
Questions?
Do you know how much money the county is putting towards this position in addition to our fifty thousand?
Of course, I, I do not know, what we originally discussed before we. Brought this was that we would put in fifty, they would put in fifty, they would hire new, when I met with them in. February or March, they backtracked from that due to, uh, uncertainty with funding. Uh, that department is, I think I was told eighty percent grant funded, I'm, I'm making up a number, but that's roughly what I was told. So I don't, I know that they have a staff member on staff who has time to dedicate to this work. As far as an actual dollar amount, I'm assuming it's just whatever staff time they're paying her. So what I'll ask for as we execute this is for an hourly, um. Log of the work done, and we'll pay half of that. So we're not going to pay for a hundred percent of the work this person does, they need, the county needs to be paying for half of the work that's done.
Well, and what is the, so twenty-five percent or twenty-five thousand is going towards an hourly rate for this position? And then twenty-five thousand is going for contractual services and infrastructure improvements.
Potentially.
What does that mean?
That, um. That it remains.
I mean, no way against this, I would just like to know.
Yeah.
How the fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, um. It will be, I don't know yet, that is something that they asked for, but they didn't give me any, um, actual ideas, and it is something that we do have to prove.
So even if we approve. This tonight.
We're proving twenty-five thousand dollars to fund the position, and then the rest of twenty-five thousand dollars, I don't think it needs to come back to council. But staff would be involved in, um. In any, in any project, projects that, that would come from that money. And I would ensure that there's a fifty fifty split with the county for it.
I'm not following you. I'm not totally following either, uh, I feel like some of these contractual services. I mean, it, it seems so vague that it could go towards anything that the county is doing, and it wouldn't necessarily be associated with recreation management.
Do you have an amendment you'd like to see so we could amend this and feel comfortable?
I think we would have to sign off on any.
Not necessarily, I guess, I, I guess I just don't understand the authority that we have under this agreement, um, can they. I- is it true that they can't spend any of the fifty thousand dollars without our approval? I don't see that that's what this agreement says, but am I misunderstanding something? Because I would really like to know how the money is being used. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do, half, I don't know yet.
So is this premature that we don't know?
The ILA itself, they want to get going on doing work. Um, to implement the River Recreation Plan, if we need to kick this can down the road for two months to massage the language, that's okay, but they really want to get going. Um, the, this is a change that they put in, and I should have asked more questions and failed to. But as far as the hourly rate, yes, I would, I would assume that we're going to receive timesheets proving L's time, and then. And then he will pay for half of that time, because that's what we're supposed to be doing, and any other. Monies that they want to spend, we would, we would prove, I'm not writing them a check for twenty-five thousand dollars to go out and do what they want.
So is this more of like a dispersment process where they're going to invoice us and then we'll pay them back? Okay.
So are we looking at something that could be like improving access to the river?
It could be, the one thing that they mentioned, which I don't think this money would go any, would, 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 uh, go very far in doing was removing some rebar and other issue.
Oh, down.
Other stuff near the takeout.
Takeout.
But I can't see twenty-five thousand dollars going very far, removing rebar from the river bed. But that is something that they did put in as one of their potential goals for twenty-five.
Yeah, they had a lot on that. Kind of barn beach rehabilitation plan.
Yeah, because that's, that's, yeah, that, that's, that, that, that project's been out there for a while.
I feel like I need to see what this, the county is budgeting, and are they, are we paying it, or? I think it's too loosey-goosey here.
I'm happy to tighten this up, ask some more questions, bring them back for this discussion in two weeks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is, is that okay? We talked about this again, is, can we get some more information from Mike first?
Absolutely, okay. The, the wording, I think, is intended to give some flexibility to, to do. Some kind of undefined tasks that come up in, in order of this, right, and so I. I want to make sure that whatever comes back is going to meet the needs of people who want clarification, so what is it that we're looking for? I don't know what we're going to be able to get, like.
An absolute.
This is the task that is going to be done, and this is who's going to do it, if they come upon, say, some. Spikes in the river, and they've got somebody that can come out and remove them, because the water's low enough now, and they want to execute a contract. We don't know that right now, how, how defined are we looking for, just so that we don't come up against the same problem.
I think as long as it's focused on recreation management, that there, that there's no problem with that, I just don't want to see twenty-five thou- twenty-five thousand dollars going towards like. Internal admin fees and stuff like that, because the department is mostly funded by grants, and so there's a lot of administrative costs. Associated with keeping that department running, and so that I'm just, I'm, it doesn't have to be like. Just the rebar project or something like that, but I want to know that, you know, they have a list of these recreation-specific management. Projects that they are going to be working on with this program, and that's where our money's going to go.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to bring this back to you with some more clarity and, and with the natural resources staff that will be doing the work.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we will. Move this to, uh, a future down the road, two weeks. Um, council report, Sharon.
Excuse me, um, on April twenty-third, the Royal Lady Flow was revealed over at the Osborne School. Uh, I don't know if you guys have seen it, but it's really nice, it has a great big ice cream cone on it. Sandy Houston is the twenty twenty-five Royal Ladies. And I'm her companion. On April thirtieth, the Chumpstick Wild Fire. W, CWSC and Partners Town Hall Meeting guest speaker was Paul Hesberg Alias Anne's father. Wish everyone in Leavenworth who is there to learn the history of fires from way back to the Indians. Uh, and all the way up till today, it was an incredible presentation. Um, really, really good, I learned a lot in that meeting. On May sixth, I attended the Cascade School District Recognition, Recognition as a Green Ribbon School District. They're the, they are the third district east of the mountains to ever be chosen. They were selected by the Washington State Office of Superintendent Public Instruction. For reducing its environmental impact, improving health and wellness, and providing effective environmental and sustainable education. Our buildings, our, all the school buildings have a composting, uh, program, they have bear-proof cans. They've installed a propane fuel station at the Transportation Department. Um, Greg Barker, Washington School Principals Education, um, this, uh, presented the school district. With, uh, ten thousand dollars. And, um, to Tracy Adu, our superintendent, and, um. The, the school district may have made a, like a film, a little movie thing of the kids. It was so much fun to watch, just all the learning they're getting about the environment. And about recycling and about taking care of the earth is incredible. Um, so if you ever have a chance to see that film, it's definitely worth watching. Okay, on May sixth, I attended the community engagement evening at the Fest Hall last month, I forgot. As Sally reminded me. On May seventh, um, I rode down to the Winachia Valley College with Robette from Win- uh, the Windmill. To an all-day Central Region's Organic Summit at the college. Carl attended the first half of the day, folks from all over were in attendance, and we spent the day learning and collaborating with different groups. Um, I'll leave part of this presentation to Carl, and on May seventh, I also attended the Planning Commission meeting. Which, um, is Maggie's report, although LOL, I saw her sleeping off and on. And she had just returned that day from trip to Bavaria. I had a rat on you.
Oh, it's on film.
May eighth, I attended the PRSA meeting, as Shane is the president of that group, I will leave that to him. On May tenth, I walked in the Fest Zug Alias May Fest Parade with the Royal Ladies. Sandy Houston, as I mentioned before, is the Royal Lady, tonight I'm here. I want to remain, I'll remind all of you that ne- next week is Public Works Week, and I totally appreciate the opportunity to leave my. Yard waste bags in front of my house for three weeks, that's so nice, then lugging those things in the car.
I appreciate it.
And so, uh, thanks for listening.
All right, in the last couple of weeks, I participated as the emcee in the fifteen annuals to Kobyak. It was fun, there was lots of money raised for the senior celebration and, um. I still have a job. Also, uh, I attended, although as a member of Cascade Medical, I attended the community, uh. Engagement night at the Fest Hall, um, but kudos to everyone in the city for putting together an amazing. Events, uh, I was so impressed with the amount of folks that came out, were genuinely interested in what was going on in our community. Bravo. Uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, Anne.
I also really enjoyed the community engagement night, I was impressed with a number of booths that we hosted this, this time around.
Most ever, yes.
Yeah, it was awesome, definitely, uh, definitely a great evening, I enjoyed bopping to all the booths and. Uh, interacting with those that were hosting. Um, I was particularly interested in. Uh, the duel of the PUD next to Helion and their, and their partnership.
Yeah.
Um. But, uh, yeah, that's all I got, because the rest of my, actually, that's not all I got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Pre-load our parking committee meeting that's coming up later this week on Thursday. With, the committee's working really hard on reviewing eight submittals for our parking garage, um. Proposal, a request for. Um, qualifications, and. They're pretty dense, and I'm pretty excited that we're gonna, on Thursday, we're gonna go through. On Thursday, we're going to go through um. We're supposed to review them all ahead of the meeting, but we're going to go through and grade them all together as a committee. Uh and pick our top three and I'm excited about that process. Um, it's kind of our our first big step towards. Bringing a parking garage to life here in Leavenworth. So I'm excited about that.
Great. Shane.
I have a long report. Uh, on April twenty eighth, I went to the Mr. Kodiak Competition at the high school. It was the first time I'd ever attended. Uh, Mr. Kodiak and it was it was fun to see all the effort that the seniors put into um. That event and their their skits to raise money for a senior sober. It was fun to see uh Clint used as a a proper. I went to the community engagement night on May sixth at the Fest Hall and. The biggest takeaway for me was um speaking with, I think, is Andy, is it Molly from Somos?
Holly.
Holly, I know something, yeah, something like that. About the Front Street Pedestrian Plaza and uh just all the work that they have put into the the project and um all the ideas that they've they've come up with to um. Redesign Front Street. Um, that was really cool to see uh. On May eighth, I attended the P R S A Board Meeting. We finally adopted a mission statement. Um. It reads the mission of the Upper Valley Parks and Recreation Service Area. Is to provide recreational activities and facilities that enhance the quality of life for everyone. Uh, we also updated the interlocal agreement between Heflan County and the. Uh, P R S A along with our bylaws to change um. The wording for the criteria for one of the board member appointments um. Previously, the language read, one of the board members had to reside along Chumstick Highway. It now reads uh. Uh, it it's now an at-large position for anyone living within the P R S A boundaries, but outside. City limits since we already have two board members from city council that live in city limits um. This opens up the position uh on the board to not restrict. Just to the Chumstick area for, you know, anyone who lives up North Road or East Somewhere, they're out bicycling. So I think that's really cool and. I walked in the May Fest Parade last Saturday, which. The first time I've been in that parade since I was in high school. That's awesome. That's been my report.
I attended the P R S A meetings well. Well said. Um, we made some good good changes there to allow more more people to be available to attend, to be a part of the board. And the mission statement was great. Um. The I do appreciate what B J had said earlier and uh I would like to see the county assessor in uh personal questioning. Um, it is unfortunate. And what B J said, um. Well, in the um this community, the greater, you know, Upper Valley voted on this uh. And uh we didn't receive the monies, so I'd like to know why, learn more about it. Um. A the park, the P A C, the Park Advisor Committee coming up. I'm glad you you said that. It is exciting. I mean, it's a parking garage, but I think this is you talk about like ground floor, like that is so cool. We talked about a thing for a decade, I agree with the community. Oh, we're talking about a parking garage for a decade and. Ten years later, here it's really gonna happen and so it's gonna starts. In the next thirty years, I ain't qualified with a date, like in the next thirty years, it's gonna happen, starting the third day. Hundreds and hundreds of pages, hundreds of pages of documents. Um, pretty cool to uh go over that. Um, attend the community, the community night, um. Like everybody said, in all the different booths, I voted. It was really great. They care had the the Q R code there to do the quick survey. A lot of people took advantage of that. They were kind of. All around um. And um. That's it for me.
So Mike, okay, uh first off, uh after uh knowing that the filing date is closed uh and. Sharon has chose not to run, I have to take take better notes in the future to to match when you're not here. Thank you. Thank you for your service for all these years and uh I'll try and step up and as long as I'm here.
I'll bring the boot on.
Um, on the fourth, uh uh this is not really council related, but uh we hosted the. Upper Valley hosted the Washington Student Cycling League up at Ski Hill for the first of what should be many uh student mountain bike races up there. And it was a huge success. Even if you didn't come up and see it, you probably saw lots of kids in town. I get I heard the pump track was. Off the hook. So really cool, fun event. And uh when it comes back to Leavenworth, I'm sure to let you know because it was really. Uh, I also attended on the sixth, the Green Ribbon Ceremony along with Sharon and that was incredible. One thing that your notes didn't highlight was that uh a big part of the application in the award was based on our uh. Accentuating outdoor learning and really taking advantage of this amazing place that we live in and utilizing Rattlesnake Hill and out at uh. Chest dried and there have been outdoor classrooms. Really, really cool. Amazing that these kids can go out and learn about stuff like in the elements uh. Right underneath the trees and next to the river. So uh really cool stuff. And uh the sixth, I also went to community engagement and I also was impressed with the number of community partners. It's always really fun to learn about how many. People contribute to our fantastic community. And on the tenth, I also marched in the May Fest Parade and it was really fun. You know, I was always worried about footwear. I think that I hear from the uh from the Bavarian, you know, about your footwear really matters. And I got I got the blessing from. Bob Smith that my footwear was okay, so it made me feel really good.
And with our trip to Bavaria, you saw all kinds of footwear with their trucks. The the official may not uh always come through with. It's great. Anything else?
That's it.
Yeah, so. Uh, one reason I didn't show up at a lot of this stuff that you guys had so much fun was I was out of town at the. Volunteered up at uh Holden Village for the for the week of uh May fifth through eleventh. Uh, it was an exceptional time, but um, yeah, I did miss a few things, but it was great being up there. I did uh I did attend and participate in the uh on April twenty sixth. Uh, they had the Leavenworth Firefighter Challenge um up at Ski Hill, which I not only attended, but I did participate in, which. I paid for dearly after that, but it was still a good time. I didn't get a free beer out of the whole thing, so you know, it was worth it. Um, I also made it out to the Dark Night Sky uh exhibit at the Fish Hatchery on April twenty seventh. They're gonna have one every month. Uh, you know, he presented here. Wenatchee Astrology uh. Um, club and I don't know the next one, but they've got these three huge telescopes and I would. I showed up at dark and so you really. Got to watch how you get there because uh it's all dark. You can't. They had a little glow lights showing you how to get over there, but I would get there another. I show up at eight thirty instead of nine thirty like I did because it was. Tracking them down where the mic uh telescopes were was a little bit of a challenge, but well worth well worth the time. And then the last thing I did was April thirtieth. Sharon already mentioned the Chumstick Wildfire Coalition put on with the with uh Paul Hesberg was really outstanding. Well worth the time and really, really worth um. Getting all the ground knowledge he could provide, so um that's the end of my report. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Right, well, quickly, I'll give an update. Um, as Sharon mentioned, I was with her for the first half of the composting. Symposium um put on by uh Department of Ecology uh in the Central District. And uh the entire Central District representatives there. What was fun to to see and to learn is that um. That we've got a good reputation of being out front, you know, and doing that and trying to move ahead with having Winston right here and everything that. Um, and those plans, so. Good, good on us and let's keep it going, so. As you know, we all went to uh, some of us went to uh Bavaria and spent a little over a week there. Um, and one of my big takeaways, I could regale you with a lot of stories, but you saw the 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 one maple that we were. Able to watch and uh it was uh that was a real fun. Community event. They they all were there and. All got engaged and it was all done by hand, not a single. Polly or, you know, I mean, it was all human power. We watched for an hour and probably saw it go up ten feet. It wasn't very far. It was gonna take them about five because it was literally inch by inch because they had uh they lift and then. Squip new uh things under it to support it and lift it. But anyway, um but. One takeaway that I hope that we're going to come away. Um, couple of opportunities and I'm going to follow up and hopefully one of them will come through. Um, with a sister city then in Bavaria. We've I know it's been talked about before and everything, but. But I actually met the mayor of that one little town that was raising that maple and um he's really open, so I'm and we're gonna. Continue to communicate, hopefully. Um, it's a much smaller town even than we are, but uh the advantage is. It's not one of the prime tourist places, but it's in Bavarian, Bavary Bavarian um in terms of their. Community life and and stuff, so um, yeah, I think it could work out really well. The other thing I just wanted to mention is we don't have any of you signed up yet for the annual conference of A W C. There's still time. If you want, please let us know. If nobody wants to, you could attend by Zoom the. Um, annual meeting. We get up to three delegates. Um, so far, I'm the only one going. Sophie's not going this year either, so. Um, we get up to three delegates, so that's on Thursday from four to five forty-five is the actual annual meeting. So if you wanted to zoom in just for that.
This Thursday?
Um, no, I'm sorry. This is it. The it's June twenty fourth through twenty seventh is the meeting. Um, and this is on the twenty sixth at four. It's a Thursday from four to five forty-five. Is the annual meeting that you can zoom in. But um. But if you wanted to come, I know Travis went last year. They are really good. Um, there's just tons of information. I'll be presenting on a couple of different um. Topics, one in tourism towns um. And and another on um lobbying your legislature. So um. Yeah, I've been asked to engage in both of those and it looks like I will be representing our district uh for the next couple. Years because nobody threw their hat in the rain to run against me.
Oh, so we don't have to go on and vote.
So you don't have to go and vote. Yeah, I don't need your vote. That's what it is.
Leading that for my calendar.
So anyway, that's the extent of my report. So I'll be.
Thank you. Uh, as Ann touched on, the the Park Advisor Committee will be helping staff for us. So narrow down the field of eight down to three, four interviews for the garage feasibility. I had the pleasure of going to Bavaria with the mayor, Aggie, Maggie and Andy and the chamber, um forcing the relationship, saw lots of things. Took about three thousand pictures of painters. Which I will upload to Troy's Dropbox at some point. Uh, I participated in the My Fest Parade, uh brought my wife in the new durdle that I picked up for her while we were in Bavaria.
Oh, I did that too.
And I was wearing all the stuff that I bought in Bavaria, so that was quite fun. Um, next week, I'm going to be on a panel at the Brownfields Conference in Yakima on Wednesday. Uh, on Thursday, we're closing City Hall for a day-long professional development day. This will be our third annual professional development day. This time we're going up to Mountain Spring Lodge in Plain to get a to get out of town. Um, and we've got a great day. Andrea put that day together for us and we're all looking forward to it. We'll learn a lot and we'll also have fun while doing it. And Count uh City Hall will also be closed on Friday of of uh of next week. We are going to be uh installing a brand-new cubicle system upstairs that will provide staff with more privacy. Um, and more soundproofing than our current environment and should allow people to focus more and chat less. And we're really looking forward to those changes being implemented. So Count uh the Town Hall will be closed next Thursday and Friday. Pressure the belt day and for that one to get done. Um, on Thursday, last week after the P R S A meeting, I emailed uh the county assessor Wesley Cornelius. And pretty much demanded that he attend our May twenty seventh meeting to explain to the council. The why Seth has to ask for an inter um fund loan between the general fund and the pool fund. Um, and to answer any questions that the council may have. And I got email confirmation from him today. That they will be in attendance at the May twenty seventh meeting. So we'll look forward to meeting uh Wesley Cornelius and his staff that day.
Right.
Thank you. Um, just two quick updates on P R S A and lodging tax reports. Those two annual reports are now done. And that leaves us with just the city's annual report remaining and we're about ninety percent done with that. So with P V and cubicles and other management training for following week. My hope and goal is to have the city's annual report submitted. By next week or the end of this week, it possibly be done with that, so we can do all these other great things. Um, just a heads up, the A P specialist position uh is scheduled for. I think we did it open until fill, but tomorrow is the last day for. Generally taking any applications, so we'll continue that process and start interviews soon. And um, I want to thank B J for your comments today. That was very kind of you. I. I agree with you wholeheartedly that we definitely need someone to come forward and explain to us what happened and why and. And hopefully this doesn't happen again. Um, I did hear from. A rumor that Douglas County also had a similar situation with the school district. And they had to lay off uh two teachers because they were shorted about three hundred thousand dollars for the year for the property taxes. So it's something that happens. So I'm 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 open to forgiveness, but how are we gonna get past this? And you guys got the email string I went ahead and forwarded to you between me and Stacy. Uh, at the county and you know. There was a little bit of anxiety from my my part, but also I think from her side, she was going, oh my gosh, what hit, what has happened here? Um, she definitely stated the county will own this at the end of the day, but how do we get there, right? I am prepared to bring you an interfund loan. On the twenty seventh. And I did do my research today because we used to have a policy about doing interfund loans. What I can no longer do is what's called a temporary interfund loan. Whereas I do a loan and then I just report to you that I did it and then I pay it back. But what we can do is up to a three-year interfund loan, take out the word temporary. Uh, the good news is, as I looked through the language from the state auditor site, is that we can um. Avoid interest on it. Because it can come from our general fund to the pool fund, which both funds are governmental fund types. Meaning they're not enterprise funds like our water, sewer, stormwater. Um, and and they're not somebody else's money, which is what's called a six hundred series fund. So uh I have written up that interfund loan for you to to approve with no interest to be charged. It is going to be kind of a unique one. And they get a little pushback from the auditor from it, but you know what? I'm gonna do it and then.
Tell them to take it out with the county.
We need to wait before this, where we meet with Wes. They should be taking out a loan. You said they own it. At the end of the day, they own it. They they take the loan and give us the money. We don't take the loan.
I'm gonna have it for you. That doesn't mean I have to actually make the loan happen.
Right.
But I need that loan in place by resolution. But if I don't get the funding from them and the pool's already starting, you know, we are extending money right now and extending the capital money. So I need to have the funds there and make sure that our fund isn't going to hole. Because that's actually against state law. So I I will be prepared with that.
But that's like Plan C or D. The hope is that the county some way is going to make us whole.
Commissioner Smith has called me three times since our P R S A meeting.
Also sits on the P R S A, by the way.
Yes, yes.
Right.
And he's had meetings with the auditor, the assessor, Dina, who's the former assessor. Stacy, I'm sure was there, but uh the prosecuting attorney was there. He he had all of his top people there to hear their feedback. How could we make this right?
This is better than the first answer that was like. Oh, well, well, next year we collect it and we'll just slowly do the the beginning. The first answer was not a good answer for them, by the way.
Yeah. And that is, you know, what the reality is, is the county can't just reissue property taxes this year. That's a massive process.
No, they can just.
It takes months and months to do. So they can't just do that, but what they can do is add the extras to the property taxes next year on top of what they should have collected. So for the record, um, they did come up with approximately four hundred and four thousand dollars is what they should have levied. What they actually levied was only a hundred and ninety-two thousand. So it's a pretty significant amount. It was about fifty percent because we were at about point zero seven, eight, something.
Right.
And we were supposed to get fifteen.
Right.
That's, that's where we're at. And then Shane, you brought it up. Thank you for that as well. The interlocal agreement, I'm gonna be bringing that because the interlocal agreement is actually between, uh, the city council. So Mayor Florrie will sign it and the school district and Shalan County and the Pashasti Community Council. So I'm starting the document here, so I will have that one on the twenty-seventh as well. And like Shane noted, this was just changing the board member to pretty much like an at-large position for what used to be the Chumstick Community Council that no longer exists. So, um, I think in their wisdom, they thought it was fair to exclude living within city limits because you always have two of six that are council members in city limits. Your commissioner could be in city limits. And there's, and the school district could be in city limits.
Right.
So the reality is you could have four at any given time within city limits on that board. Are there any questions? I, I will bring all those documents prepared for you.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Maggie.
Yeah, I will briefly just say, uh, sincere thank you for the opportunity to go to Bavaria with the team. Um, I started here in twenty nineteen and was tasked with, uh, being the board secretary for the Designer Reboard and not knowing anything about the overall Bavarian outlook. And have slowly learned over the years and it was just really exciting to get to see it in real life. Um, and bring back some great ideas and concepts, um, the community. Um, cool to be a part of some of the festivals and, uh, and get a taste of what those communities are like. And I really see that here as well. And so I got to participate in the parade for the first time ever. Even though I, I know I live in Wenatchee, I do feel like I'm a part of this community by me. I'm a part of this team. And I got to invite my mom and my son and they walked with me and talked and it was awesome. So, yeah, just thank you for that. I'm excited to share pictures with you all. If you ever want to get them with me, I'd be happy to sit down with you. And yes, I did have a rough week last week. Not in a lie. I came back sick and jet lagged. So, uh, appreciate the grace there. Um, we are continuing to work with our consultants on the comp plan update. Um, you may have met some of our consultants at the, uh, engagement night last week. Thank you. Um, and they're working on the parks plan as well. We have a survey that's going out. I think we only had thirty people participate that night, but we're gonna keep it going through July. And then we'll show some results at the barbecue in, uh, August. So, other than that, I don't have too much else.
Andy.
Um, yeah, I know what Maggie said about Bavaria. It was really cool. Um, I, I mentioned this earlier, but we're all looking at the top, we're looking at things to your very different senses, just because there was so many different components. Um, so it's fun to come back and like, oh yeah, we all were at the same things, but to completely different. Uh, and I think as far as the pedestrian plaza project, it was really cool. Seeing the number of pauses we did, thinking about our project and how incorporated those elements here really is sustainable and um, so thank you for the opportunity. Uh, and then just any other quick items, uh, we did have three parks employees start today. So one has been a city employee of Eastbury, it's now in parks. Three for tents. And then Nathan, Mary and Austin Reynolds, uh, just came on as our eight-month permanent return season. Just an exciting addition to happen. Um, our herbrand employment project is starting up the, uh, food con this tomorrow. And I expect that contractor, um, ramp up and starts pretty soon. So you'll see them on Commercial Street and on Pine Street. And then the last item, uh, the pool filters were delivered on Monday. Uh, and we have been sharing publicly that one month from today, so June thirteenth is the planned floor.
Okay. All right, um, just a reminder, Community Block Party, August twenty-first. And I would entertain a moment. Move by Shane, second by Ann. All in favor, let me see your hands. And they all wanna go home.
Great. Do you think I could get a printout of all of those? Those are a few. It's a lot. Is that too much to?